Will the members and guests of the representative town meeting please come to order? Will you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I ask the members of the new term to please stand and raise your right hand to be administered the oath of office? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Connecticut as long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge according to law the duties as a member of the representative town meeting of the town of Greenwich to the best of your ability, so help you God? Congratulations. Item two now comes before us, to elect a moderator. Are there any nominations? Mr. Lurie from District Seven.
Fellow members, guests, I rise to nominate Tom Byrne for another term as moderator. I do this both as an individual and on behalf of the full membership of District Seven, which joins me in this nomination. The reasons to nominate Tom are many, but I can summarize it in just eight words. He has done an excellent job as moderator. He's run the meetings with care. He's given opponents more than enough time to present their cases. He was instrumental in the creation of the consent calendar, which has greatly improved our productivity. He was instrumental in getting the town to update its website. And finally, he's given pride to this organization, and that's evidenced by the number of filled delegate seats that we have now compared to the last couple of years. And finally, last double finally, is that he has run these meetings with grace and professionalism. Consequently, I have great pleasure in nominating Thomas J. Byrne as RTM moderator for 2008 and 2009.
Second, are there any other nominations? I will entertain a motion that nominations be closed and the clerk cast one ballot. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion has been carried. And one more note to district leaders. If any member shows up late, please tell them to come up to the front so they can be sworn in before they vote.
Madam Chairman, if you'll allow me just a few words. Roger, I want to thank you for those kind words, and of course, District Seven as well. Thank you very much. And I want to thank you all for bestowing on me the privilege of serving in this position. We are now entering, beginning the 38th session of the Greenwich RTM. Our 75th anniversary will take place in October. And I believe we start this session with more momentum than I can recall ever beginning with as moderator. We have some big shoes to fill. The prior session of the RTM responded to challenges raised to what I really think is the continuation of the RTM as we know it last term in unparalleled ways, leading to the infusion of new members with new ideas, and I welcome all the new members tonight, and the rededication of our incumbent members to preserving what really is the one place where we have full and free debate on the merits of issues facing us in the town. Now, in addition to all the difficult decisions we have facing us, I intend to place two more tasks before us. As I inform many of you, I intended, if I was selected as moderator again, to appoint a special committee to take a look at the way we organize ourselves and run the RTM. This internal review has not been done for over 10 years, and I think it's time that we do it again. And that effort will be chaired by Joan Caldwell. And I ask that if anyone sitting here, and I encourage all of you to consider doing this, if you have an interest in serving on such a special committee, to take a look at the way we structure our committees, we select members to our committees, making any changes to our rules, that you email me with a brief description of your interest in serving in such an effort. Second, it is our 75th year, culminating in our anniversary in October. I believe we have an obligation to celebrate our history, and I think we should organize some event that honors our predecessors, educates our committee, and really creates a setting where we can all come together in some enjoyable environment. I thought I would look to the 75th anniversary of Congress to see how they might have celebrated that anniversary. And when I discovered that the 38th session of Congress took place during the most intense internal conflict and loss of life in the United States, the American Civil War, I figured maybe we ought to look somewhere else for examples. So with that, again, I thank you all very much. We have a lot to do this term, and it should be exciting. Thank you all again. So that we don't waste time, Peter Berg, District Eight.
Good evening. Actually, I'm here on behalf of the League of Women Voters, and the League is sponsoring its Legislative Breakfast this Thursday at Eastern Greenwich Civic Center. The new legislative session is about to begin in Hartford. And while what happens in Vegas may stay in Vegas, what happens in Hartford has a profound impact on you and on your constituents, on your taxes, the air you breathe, the traffic on I-95, and much more. State Senator Nickerson and each of our state representatives wants to tell you what is on the calendar for this session, and they want to answer your questions. So mark your calendar for this Thursday morning at 8:00 a.m. and join us for breakfast at the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center. Secondly, as you know, Connecticut has a presidential primary on February 5, just three weeks from tomorrow. The bad news is, more than one-third of your constituents who are registered to vote cannot vote in the presidential primaries. Why? Because they are unaffiliated. The good news is, unaffiliated voters can still enroll in a party and vote in the primary. January 31 is the last day that our registrars can receive enrollments in the mail from unaffiliated voters who want to vote in the presidential primary. And I have some mail registration cards here if you need one. And finally, noon on February 4 is the last hour that unaffiliated voters can go to Town Hall in person to enroll in a party and be eligible to vote in our presidential primary. If you have any questions or want one of these cards, come see me in the back of the room. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That now brings us to item three on our call, the election of a moderator pro temp. Do we have any nominations for that position? Robert Tuthill, Chair of District Three. Joan Caldwell has been nominated. Are there any further nominations for moderator pro temp? Christine Edwards. Christine Edwards has been nominated. Are there any further nominations for moderator pro temp? All right, hearing none, I will close the nominations. At this point, we will invite the nominees to address the body if they so desire. Ms. Edwards?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and all our delegates. I'm Christine Edwards. This is my third term here in our legislative body of the representative town meeting. I feel this is a grand meeting. It's a real, true look at how we have the constitutional process and the involvement of the individual citizen in making decisions for town government. I wanted to bring one of those signs that comes up and unfolds and says "Change," because I've been seeing that a lot, but didn't have time to put that together. But here's my virtual sign that says "Change." This is in no way a kind of us versus them or anything of that nature. I have such profound respect for Joan Caldwell and have learned a tremendous amount from her in terms of how the town works, how to really, in great grace and in calm measure, present so many different sides of issues. I'm just presenting myself here. I think that it's time to look at potential change, and like with Mr. Koder, who after many, many years came out of the Ethics Committee, that it's time to have the training for other people within our town government. So I'm putting myself forward from a point of view of change, not to make any differences from the point of view of hopefully keeping everything in grand order and calm pace, but just that it's time to start training new individuals to take responsibilities in the town. And especially if Joan is going to go into this grand design of looking at the structure we have for our town government, maybe this is time to have that change and have somebody else start training to be the moderator pro temp. And maybe I can look forward to being the moderator in due course of time. Thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting, I've always believed that if you aren't willing to speak for yourself, you shouldn't expect anyone else to speak for you. The only thing I can tell you that you don't already know is I really love the job. I have to frankly admit, I'm nuts, but I do love the job. I like watching this body work. I like seeing the results of all the things that we do and we start and we finish go on in the town. I like the feeling that this is a democracy working as our founding fathers intended it to work. And so, to be moderator pro temp and to walk in his footsteps behind him, doing what I can to make his job a little easier and make things come together for all of us, is fun. I like it, and I'd like to continue.
All right, any discussion on the election of a moderator pro temp? All right, I believe, yes, Mr. Goss?
Just for purposes of the voting card, there are no names on them. Will you designate who is one or two?
All right, well, that's what I was, I was just looking for a copy of it. Could I just see a copy? All right, do all the districts have a pink voting card? All right, in column one, we will list the names of the candidates at the top of the column, and we'll list them in alphabetical order. So in column one, please write Caldwell, and in column two, please write Edwards. And obviously, if there are any questions, I think it's self-evident how you will vote on that card. And we will await the results of the vote before proceeding further. If there is anyone who arrived after the swearing-in, would you please come forward
There we go.
Thank you, sir.
Surprisingly, most voted for Joan.
We have the results of the vote on the election of a moderator pro temp. Joan Caldwell, 159; Christine Edwards, 43. Congratulations, Joan Caldwell, our moderator pro temp. All right, we do have some administrative matters to take up at this time. Mary Ferry, Chair of District Five.
Good evening. District Six joins District Five in asking that you honor the memory of Barbara Kitchell Gerdler, who died December 9, 2007, at the age of 97. She was a granddaughter of the Bennie family who gave Bennie Park to Greenwich. Most of us knew her as Bobby. Bobby was a dedicated environmentalist and active community volunteer. Her list of accomplishments is long. She was a founding member of the Greenwich Land Trust and the Connecticut Conservation Society. In 1956, she helped her mother Helen Bennie Kitchell form the Greenwich Point Committee, which is now known as Friends of Greenwich Point. Bobby is the only person ever named an honorary life member of the Friends of Greenwich Point. In addition, she was a longtime director of the Connecticut Forest and Parks Association and helped found Greenwich's Inland, Wetlands, and Watercourses Agency. In addition to her environmental work, Bobby found time for other community activities. When her four sons were young, she served two terms as president of the Old Greenwich PTA. She was president of the Greenwich League of Women Voters from 1943 to 1945, and again from 1958 to 1960. I remember seeing her at league meetings as long as she was able to attend. Bobby was an elected member of RTM, first in District Six and then in District Five, from January 1964 until May 1992. She and Everett Smith were the first RTM delegates to the Southwestern Regional Planning Agency, SWRPA, where she served from October 1973 to March 1987. We are thankful for Bobby's many contributions of time and talent to our community. Mr. Moderator, we ask that this tribute to Barbara Kitchell Gerdler be included in the minutes and that an official copy be sent to her family.
Will the members please rise and join me in a moment of silence in memory of Barbara It has been our tradition at the organizational meeting to introduce the committee and district leaders. So at this point, I'll ask our districts, why don't we start with the districts? We'll go in numerical order. I ask the chairs to come down and introduce themselves and their vice chairs and secretaries, and then we'll follow that with the committee leaders, beginning with Dean Goss, Chairman of District One.
Good evening. Our vice chairman is going to continue to be Dr. Carl Carlson, and our secretary will be Mary Pellegrina. We are happy to welcome to our conference, we have three people who are both new to RTM, Tim Jimonelli, Frederick Lee, and Jane Pankowski, and all of whom have jumped right in and are taking committee assignments for us.
District Two, Kevin Brogan decided to spend more time at work, and so he resigned as chairman of District Two, and I was elected as chair of District Two at our last meeting. We have, the vice chair was, excuse me, was elected at the same meeting, and her name is Wilma Nacinovich. The secretary is a new member of the RTM, and she is also a new member of District Two. Her name is Jill Oberlander. We have several, two, excuse me, another new member, which we welcome enthusiastically, and her name is Nancy Marshville. There was one member that was elected that has decided to go on to other endeavors, and his name was Joseph Calico. We welcome also, and I failed to say this, very enthusiastically Jill Oberlander. The other members of District Two were re-elected and continue to serve.
I'm Bob Tuthill, and District Three has the same members as last term, and I'm the chairman, and Tom Canelius is the vice chairman again, and Louise Babus, Louise Tessie Babus is our secretary.
Good evening. I'm Bob McKnight, Chairman, District Four. Our vice chairman is Tom Greco, and our secretary, once again, Frances Avery.
I'm Mary Ferry, District Five. Our leadership has not changed. Lucy Krasner, Vice President, and Jennifer Dayton, Secretary.
District Six, Old Greenwich, Colleen Jenkins, Chair. Vice Chair is Karen Sodikun, and Secretary is Stephen Meskers.
I'm Valerie Stauffer, Chair of District Seven. Our leadership remains the same this year. Vice Chair is Roger Lurie, and Secretary is Rob Searle.
Jim Butel, District Eight. On behalf of my district, welcome, since that's where we are. Our vice chairman is Josh Brown, and our secretary is Susie Anderson.
District Nine, I'm Betsy Fruman. I chair the district.
I chair the district, and all is well in District 9. We have a full boat, two new members, and three people who came over to Western Greenwich. Our vice chair is Vin DiMarco, and our secretary is Jane Arnone.
District 10, our leadership has not changed. I'm Joan Caldwell, District Chair. Our vice chairman is Jerry Anderson, and our secretary is Swan Grant.
I'm Todd Kennedy, from District 11, that's in the northeast part of Greenwich, and I'm chairman. Our vice chairman is Joseph Fahes, and Secretary Dospina Fasialotis. Many new members.
I'm Bob May, Chairman of District 12. Bob Perry comes back as our vice chairman, and Miriam Menon is our secretary. Thank you.
Thank you all. We'll now get the committee leadership. We'll begin with Mr. Von Keiseling for the Appointments Committee, and Mr. Von Keiseling, why don't you take this opportunity to talk about, well, why don't we talk about the Claims Committee as well?
I understand, thank you. I'm Chris Von Keiseling, for some of you who don't know me. I wore a nice suit for you. I was very humbled by the support, they made me chairman of the Appointments Committee after 15 years, so I think I'm seasoned enough. But the most important thing is we have a really great staff in there. Joe Pellegrino is the vice chairman, and many of you know him from District 11, and he's superb. And Susie Morton, as we all know, lovin' dear she is, is our secretary. I wanted to take this opportunity, as many of you know, old timers, the, we're always used to appointments being nominated by the selectmen, but there are some appointments that are nominated and made by the RTM. And when they're made by the RTM, it is the Appointments Committee that has the responsibility of putting together those nominations and putting them before you. We would like to get these on the march call, so this is out of the way as soon as possible and continues our business. And those would be the Claims Committee, the Labor Contracts Committee, the Condemnation Committee, and the Flood and Erosion. The Claims Committee and the Labor Contracts Committee, we'd like to interview candidates on the 29th next week, the Tuesday, and Condemnation and Flood and Erosion, we were talking probably around February 5th, to give you some kind of a timeframe. What I'd like, if I could, is perhaps the, by charter, the moderator is the chairman of the Claims Committee, and perhaps you could give us a thumbnail on what the Claims Committee does and what are the qualifications.
All right. You said the 29th, which would be two weeks from tomorrow, is that right?
Yes, I believe that is.
Okay. The Claims Committee is unique among RTM committees, in that unlike every other committee, which is our advisory only, they make recommendations, and the full RTM then acts on those recommendations. The Claims Committee stands in place of the RTM. It approves appropriations to settle claims against the town, or to pay judgments that have been entered against the town, only where there are sums being paid out. For example, if a tax appeal is decided against the town, often those are resolved by providing credits against future tax payments. Claims Committee doesn't get involved with such matters. There are nine members in addition to the moderator, and all positions are open in a new term, but I will tell you that I believe all nine of the members from the prior term are returning members this term, and I believe are interested in returning. But all positions are open. We have a number of lawyers on the committee, people who have some litigation experience, or claims experience, some risk management experience, not a qualification, I mean, it's not a prerequisite. If you have an interest, if you think you have some expertise to lend to that, it's an extremely important committee, as we all know. You know, the claims pending against the town, then contact Mr. Von Keiseling and make arrangements to attend the interviews that his committee sets up.
And as you know quite well, the Labor Contracts Committee has been ably managed and chaired by Ms. Joan Caldwell for many years, and perhaps you could give us a description.
The Labor Contracts Committee is a special committee made up of only five representatives from the RTM. These five representatives, plus two alternates, seven in total, generally have some labor background. They have either, in their work history, been involved with collective bargaining, or they've perhaps had some experience in insurance or in human resources. It is that kind of expertise that we use to go over all of the contracts. All of the contracts in this town are negotiated either by the First Selectman or the Board of Education, and in either situation, prior to the start of negotiations, the negotiators and the representatives of either the Board, the First Selectman or the Board of Education, meet with the Labor Contracts Committee to lay out where they think they want to go in collective bargaining. We try to give them input from you people, as best as we get it, as you give it to us, so that there is a meeting of the minds on the direction the town is taking. Periodically, through collective bargaining, the town's labor officer may call and say that he has reached a point where he needs information, he needs guidance from the RTM, and the committee will then meet with him. It is a meeting called at his request, not ours. At the end of the negotiating session, when there is a tentative settlement, the Labor Contracts Committee goes over the details of that settlement, and makes a recommendation to you as to whether the settlement should go up or down, and vote. This also applies to anything that goes to arbitration. We'll have one coming in March, I believe, that is coming to us from arbitration. The meetings of the committee are usually in the very late afternoon, almost early evening, 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock at night. This is to give several of our members who work, an opportunity to get back into Greenwich and to be present for the meeting. We meet on an as-needed basis, so there's no way you can mark your calendar, you just have to be available to meet when a contract or a settlement is before us. It's a very rewarding job. The labor, as you know, represents about 75% to 80% of the town's budget.
Thank you, Ms. Caldwell. And the other board commission, which is made up of RTM members, four out of the five are, is the Condemnation Commission, and the incumbent chairman now is our friend from District 3, Bob Tuttle.
Thank you, Chris. Chris asked me to say a few things about the commission for people who might be interested. I think I've been on for 10 or is it 12 years, Bob Perry? We came on, I think, the same time. The commission is kind of an odd kind of name, because condemnation, I don't know when we last condemned any property, meaning the last time we've taken any property by eminent domain, that's what they mean.
Two minutes.
Okay. But, but you gotta understand this. Their main job is, when there's a sewer project, we allocate the money, the cost, all of which 100% of the cost of a sewer project has to be apportioned among the benefited properties. In other words, the rest of the town doesn't pay anything. And we don't have the paid staff that maybe, let's say, planning and zoning would have. So what I've found, in my experience with doing this, is that you need some people on it who have, by the way, this, there has to be a political balance, meaning they can't all be of one party. Unlike the last two committees talked about, which were RTM committees, this is not, and this falls under the state regulations. We have five incumbents in here, I don't know whether they want to serve again or not, I can only say this, that the time involved, you need some expertise in the construction kind of business, technical things, and we need people who are available, because they work in town, or hopefully maybe retired. I have to thank Bob Perry and Dean Goss for the time that they've done in trying to help me with checking things, because although finance has been very nice in helping us somewhat with some of these things, there's a lot more work that the commission has to do to try to check things. And if you're interested, and you want us to take a long night, come here on Wednesday the 23rd, because right up here in the front, the commission will be sitting here, listening to the people who want to have something to say from the North Miami Sewer Project, before we apportion the money on that. So it's a difficult job, it requires a certain amount of technical skill. If someone's interested, they can call me. I think the important thing is you have to be willing to make a real commitment of time if there's a sewer project. If there's not, it's a cup, cup of tea.
Thank you, Bob. The last board is the Flood and Erosion Control Board, which of course is on a lot of people's mind now with the April flooding we had last, last spring. That is, the board is authorized, this is out of the general description. The board is authorized to plan, layout, acquire, construct, maintain, supervise, and manage flood and erosion control systems, and may enter into agreements with the state and federal governments to accomplish its purposes. It has five members, four of whom are appointed by the representative town meeting for terms of four years. The fifth member is the First Selectman, by charter. Now, if you please could get those, your CVs and any information you have, if you're interested in any of these boards and commission committees, into me, I would ask that you send them to the vice chairman, Joe Pellegrino, because he's much more computer literate than I am, and he'll probably have greater success than I have. So Joe Pellegrino in District 11, he's in your directory book, email or phone. Of course, you can always call me if you have any questions, but I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Did we get the secretary of your committee?
Oh, I'm, yes, Susie Morton, I said. The famous and beloved.
All right. Next.
Hi, I'm Pam Frederick, and I'm Chair of the Finance Committee, returning this year. Bob Tuttle will actually be our vice chair this year, we'll welcome him. He's been a committee member and a good mind to work with, so we look forward to working with him this year. And then we have a new member, Amy Bibb, who will serve as secretary. I'm from District 1, thanks.
I'm Jerry Isaacson. I was re-elected chairman of the Health and Hermit Services Committee. Our vice chairman is Bill, I'm District 5. Our vice chairman is Bill Bambrick from District 12, and our secretary is Alexis Vulgaras from District 6.
My name is Franklin Blumer. I am continuing as chairman of the Land Use Committee. The Land Use Committee is a very different committee this year. We have six new members, six out of the 12 people on the committee are new. At the officer level, the vice chairman is also new, Peter Berg from District 8, and the secretary, continuing, Mark Schroeder from District 2. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Douglas Wells. I'm the head of Legislative Rules Committee, I've been re-elected as chairman. We have two new officers. Vice chairman is Kip Bergweger from District 8. Our secretary is Rich DePretta of District 12. We have three new members to our committee. District 3, Louise Babus. District 7, Randall Huffman. District 11, Joseph Fahes. We have a slim majority of attorneys in our group. Unfortunately, a great majority of Yankee fans. Despite these serious character flaws, I find that I'm able to work with all of them quite well.
Good evening, I'm Karen Sodikon, and I will be returning as chair. Carol Zerilli from District 1 will be returning as vice chair, and Lucia Jensen from District 7 will be our secretary. We have two new members, and I think we have an exciting committee that I look forward to working with.
Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, I'm Bob Brady of District 5, and I was elected chairman of the Education Committee. Josh Brown of District 8 is elected vice chair, and Mary Jacobsen of District 7, our secretary. Thank you.
I'm Mary Ferry from Town Services. The Town Services voted 6, 4, 1, to postpone until March the election of a chairman. I was elected vice chairman, and Evan Delmon was elected secretary.
Good evening. David Melick, District 8, representing the chairman position for Public Works, thanks to the committee's support. And I would also like to note the vice chair, Bob Kevie. Excuse me. A little note on Bob, he served as chair for eight years, vice chair before that for four years, and I think it's 28 years in the RTM, so thank you. Secretary, Rosney Castro, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Michael Petrosely, I'm a delegate from District 12. I have the honor and responsibility of serving as the chairperson of the Budget Overview Committee. We have a very talented team this term, roughly half new members, I think we can really leverage what we do. It's our mandate to act as an advisor to the RTM on all matters related to the budget, and we're going to refocus our efforts on that. As part of our team, Barbara Rude is going to act as vice chair, Christine Edwards is going to act as our secretary, and Bob Larden is going to continue in the role as our chairperson, leading the effort in our departmental reviews. I'd personally like to thank Randall Huffman for all of his efforts over the last couple of years. He's really led us, I'm going to lean into Randall for all of his ways done and his expertise. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, while I'm up here, may I ask, I know at least one member has arrived even later than the last time that people were sworn in, so is it possible that that person and anyone else that's come in late, even later, can be sworn in so they can vote?
Well, anyone who hasn't been sworn in will need to be sworn in before they vote, but we're not voting right now, so.
No, I'm just asking whether or not, if that can be done. Okay, thank you. Vince DiMarco, I'm chairman of the, again, of the Transportation Committee. The committee met last Tuesday evening for the primary purpose of electing officers for the new term. There weren't any items referred, so I won't be getting back up again tonight. The committee has seven new delegates, including one who would like to see transportation services for seniors be more accessible and user-friendly, and another who is a daily train commuter. We had a spirited discussion regarding the current initiatives of the governor and the DOT to make mass transit viable for more people, by filling the gaps in transit services, and the influence of the Transportation Committee, what we could have on town officials to take part in those initiatives in order to improve travel conditions for Greenwich residents, as well as the substantial daily influx of non-residents. The committee was pleased to have Carol Ducrey, once again, take on the secretarial chores, and Alan Small to continue as vice chair and leader of the Budget Subcommittee. And of course, I'm honored to continue as chairman. All votes were unanimous, District 3 and 4 absent.
All right, thank you very much, and good luck to all of our district and committee leaders. With respect to the minutes, we typically approve the minutes of our prior meeting. We will not do that tonight, as there were some substantial revisions that are required to be made, and those should be made in writing, and you should get a copy of them. So I will not call for approval of those minutes tonight. And finally, before we get to the rest of our call, Peter Tessie, our First Selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, moderator pro tem. Fellow members, congratulations, and good luck to you as you embark on your term. I do look forward to working with you. I wanted to take this opportunity, as I did last month, to apprise you of some of the activities that my office has been working on. The first one is that the Capital Improvement Projects Committee will convene, reconstituted, on Wednesday, January 16th, at 10:30 a.m. in the Maza Room. The committee now includes non-voting ex-official representatives from the RTM, which is going to be represented by Josh Brown, the BET, Mr. Bob Stone, and the Board of Ed, Nancy Wisler. We have a quite extensive list of requests that are currently in draft form that came through the prior administration, and in order for us to stay within our budget parameters, we are going to have to do some additional legwork to contain those requests. So this committee will be meeting in, very aggressively looking at how we can reduce the amount that will be requested from the BET and RTM, to live within the capital financing plan that was established over the last several years. During the last several weeks, I've been meeting with various department heads on their operating budgets, and asking them to make adjustments to, again, live within the guidelines that have been established by the guidelines that have been established by the BET. We are making progress, and I believe the budgets will reflect the fiscal restraint that we have established over the last several years. On the CIP, just to be clear, the members are, that vote, are the first selectmen, the superintendent of schools, Betty Sternberg, the commissioner of public works, Lloyd Hubs, the director of Parks and Recreation, Joseph Liano, the comptroller, Peter Monarsky, our town planner, Diane Fox, and from one of the various appointing authorities, Donald Heller, who is currently the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. In addition to the ex-official members I have already noted, we are supported by the budget director, Roland Geiger, John Crery, our town administrator, and Sue Wallerstein, the deputy superintendent of schools for operations. Another important step that I took over this past week is to meet with the town department heads to discuss issues of mutual concern. This will be a monthly practice. This past month, we had a long agenda, but was, what was especially important to me was that we codified accountability and performance expectations for each town department head that reports to me. I believe that this is essential to ensuring accountability, and the three areas that it focuses on is time and attendance, so that each person who reports to me, if you call me, I should know their comings and goings, and they will advise me of time out of the office for conferences, vacation, sick, and it will be done through email. The second area that they will focus their attention and report is goals and objectives. We oftentimes hear about setting goals and objectives. We are going to do so with each of these people in a collaborative manner. I'm asking them to share their personal vision for their department, and essentially for themselves, what they hope to accomplish as professionals, with the aim of serving the greater community. They will sit down and work with me to outline their strategy for fulfilling these goals. Third, and most important, I believe, is that they work to their job description. The Human Resources Department takes incredible amount of time to post jobs and write the job descriptions. I think it's imperative that we see to it that people perform to them. Not only do they perform to the job description, but the people who work for them perform to their job descriptions. And as I say in the memo, we cannot be fully accountable if we are unable to document our actions or the actions of our subordinates. As I've learned over the last several weeks and through my prior experience in town government, my aim with this is just not accountability and performance, but to hopefully mitigate some of the legal activity we've seen in the area of personnel, because clearly it has proven to be time-consuming, and it's proven to be counterproductive to the benefits of the town and its residents. Another initiative that I talked about during the election campaign was providing employee housing opportunities, and we've set up a link on the town website to facilitate matching housing opportunities in Greenwich with the needs of our employees. It is my goal to identify local housing opportunities and thus increase the number of town employees who would live within the community. So if you happen to have an apartment for rent, you can email housing underscore opportunities at greenwichct.org and fill out one of the sheet, the sheet that's there, and your rental, either a home or apartment, will be listed for, I believe, 45 days, and it will be an automatic resource for any employees coming to work for the town to look there. It's important to note that the median annual salary for a town employee is $63,500. So affordable housing that was priced in the range of $1,000 to $2,500 per month was the most appropriate for this population. If you have further questions about it, you certainly can contact my office and the town administrator, John Crery. And finally, we have appointed a committee led by Lori Jackson and Kate Brennan of the Commission on Aging to develop ideas on promoting and expanding senior tax relief. It is a complicated subject and will be given thorough study over the next several months. The intent is to produce a report by April that can be considered by both the Board of Selectmen, the BET, and ultimately you. So if you have any questions regarding that particular initiative, I would suggest you speak to either Kate Brennan and Lori Jackson of the Commission on Aging. The representation on that committee is inclusive of our tax collector, town administrator, assessor, representation from the BET, and I'm going to encourage them to hold a public hearing to solicit input from the benefited population, as well as the population at large. And finally, having not had success in predicting the weather, for any of you who read the paper, the snow emergency is now canceled. You can go back to parking normally, but again, thank you for your time, and we look forward to seeing you over the next several months as we begin to unveil the '08-'09 budget, and again, keep your comments coming for input into improvement into the process. Thank you.[944.00][944.00](Applause).
Thank you. That now brings us to the remainder of our call for tonight's meeting. And I notified our district and committee chairs that based on the recommendations of our districts and committees, the consensus was to create two groups of combined items. One primarily consisting of non-controversial appointments, and the other consisting of appointments, not that they're controversial, but they, there are motions to postpone pending with respect to those appointments because of inability to schedule interviews. So it will be my recommendation that we first combine the following items in one group. We'll take one vote, assuming that we suspend the rules to do this. Items 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 16. Now, these items would have gone on our consent calendar but for a problem with the wording of the resolutions that were placed on our call. The language in the call said that we were renominating individuals rather than appointing, and as our practice in the past has been, we don't put on the consent calendar items that require substitute resolutions. In the second group of combined items, I will recommend that these items be placed together. Items 8, 13, 14, 15, 18, 19, 20, and 21. And assuming those are combined accordingly, that would leave to take up separately items 4, 17, 22, and 23. So it is my recommendation that we combine, let's first take care of those appointments that we will vote on tonight. Those are to combine 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 16. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to combine those items for voting purposes?
(Unintelligible).
The mo, it has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and combine items 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 16 for voting purposes. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules to combine those items for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Let us take care procedurally of grouping this second group of resolutions. Once again, this would be at least to put together all those for which a committee is going to move to postpone to our March meeting. These are items 8, 13, 14, 15, 18, 19, 20, and 21. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to combine those items for voting purposes? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and combine items 8, 13, 14, 15, 18, 19, 20, and 21 for voting purposes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion is carried. And we will start with that first group of combined items. We'll then take up the second group, leaving the four separate items, 4, 17, 22, and 23, for the end. So that brings item 5 before us, which is a nomination from the Board of Selectmen. Peter Crumbine, our selectman with that resolution.
Good evening, and congratulations to our new members. All of these nominations are substitute resolutions, but the wording is really the nature of a, of typos. They're not of any substantive nature. The first one is number 5. Resolved the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring 3/31/2011, Richard C. Wellington.
Thank you. Will a member move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 5, the substitute resolution on item 5 has been moved and seconded. Karen Sodikon with the report of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Mr. Von Keiseling has graciously asked me to go first. The Parks and Rec Committee interviewed Rick Wellington at their meeting last Tuesday. Rick is to be nominated to be appointed to the Board of Parks and Recreation. He has served on the board since 2004. Rick has been a very active member on the board, serving on many of its committees, and most recently as chair. He's an excellent nominee and was quickly approved again for the Board of Parks and Recreation. Our vote was 12-0-0.
Chris Von Keiseling with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Ditto. We saw Mr. Wellington on the 8th last Tuesday. Our vote was 12-0-0 in favor of him. We highly recommend his return.
Discussion on item 5. Item 6 now comes before us. Mr. Crumbine.
Resolved the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring 3/31/2011, Robert J. Oka.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 6 has been moved and seconded. Ms. Sodikon with the report of the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Parks and Recreation Committee interviewed Mr. Oka at their meeting last Tuesday. Bob is nominated to be appointed to the Board of Parks and Recreation, having served on the board also since 2004. Bob has served on the Marine, Gulf, CIP, waterfront, and steering committees of the board. He explained that his priority are the Cosco Power Plant, waterfront, CIP, and dredging issues. Bob is another well-qualified candidate, and was approved with a same vote of 12-0-0.
Mr. Von Keiseling.
We saw Mr. Oka on the 8th. Again, a renomination, reappointment, a superb member of the committee, and we voted 12-0-0, and hope you'll agree.
Discussion on item 6. Item 7 now comes before us. Peter Crumbine with that resolution.
Resolved the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring 3/31/2011, Scott R. Johnson.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Substitute resolution on item 7 has been moved and seconded. Karen Sodikon.
The Parks and Recreation Committee interviewed Scott Johnson for the Board of Parks and Rec. Scott is nominated for an appointment. Having already served three or four terms, he couldn't exactly recall, but he thought he'd served since 1999. Scott sees part of his value on the board as providing institutional memory for the board as it moves forward with new members and new projects. Scott has served on waterfront, POCD, master plan for parks, and the power plant committees. He is a lawyer in Greenwich. He was a very satisfactory candidate, and our vote was unanimous again at 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with the report of our Appointments Committee.
We met with Mr. Johnson on the 8th also. Our committee voted 12-0-0 in favor.
Discussion on item 7. Item 9 now comes before us. Mr. Crumbine.
Resolved the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Board of Ethics for a term expiring 3/31/2011, Heather Parkinson Webb.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? Substitute resolution on item 9 has been moved and seconded. Mary Ferry with the report of our Town Services Committee.
We briefly re-interviewed Heather Parkinson Webb last Tuesday night. We had seen her several months ago when she was appointed to fill the vacancy. She's an excellent candidate. We voted 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling.
I'm sorry, 11-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling.
We, we met with Reverend Webb on the 8th. We voted 12-0-0. For those who are not familiar, she's also the chaplain at North Nathaniel Witherell and does a superb job with this new group. I would make one side of comment. This committee, the Board of Ethics, which has given a lot of people concern over the years, is an extraordinarily well-functioning body today, and I would highly endorse it.
Discussion on item 9. Item 10 now comes before us. Mr. Crumbine.
Resolved the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Commission on Aging for a term expiring 3/31/11, Gloria B. Jackson, normally called Lori.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The substitute resolution on item 10 has been moved and seconded. Jerry Isaacson with the report of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Health and Human Services met with Lori Jackson on last Tuesday. She has been the chairman of this commission for two years, and but she has served on the, as a member, for three years. She has extensive volunteer experience in town. The commission, by the way, is strongly in favor of providing affordable housing for seniors and workers in the town. Excuse me. And I might add that all of the candidates for appointment to Commission on Aging expressed this same view, but they have supported the Housing Authority's recent proposal in concept, and she made it quite clear that it was in concept. They have not necessarily supported the location of it. A survey has, supposedly has just been mailed to 4,000 residents, taken from voter registration rolls, not just to seniors, to identify location and needs of any future senior center. I found this a little bit interesting. In the first year of the Medicare Part D plan, they provided help to over 1,000 people in Greenwich. This year, this past December, they supported 286 people. It seemed curious as to why that number dropped so dramatically, but apparently people are more accustomed to using their computers, or they decided not to change their plans, but it dropped considerably. For the time being, we should also note that the budgets of the commission and the senior center will remain separate, and our vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
We met this, sorry, Lori, and we voted 12-0-0. I believe that was on December, oh, excuse me, January 8th. 12-0-0 for Ms. Jackson.
Discussion on item 10. Item 11 now comes before us. Do we have the resolution on that? Lynn Lavery, our selectman. Catherine Brennan.
Good evening, I'm Lynn Lavery from the Board of Selectmen, and be it resolved this evening that Catherine Brennan be appointed as a regular member of the Commission on Aging.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? Substitute resolution on item 11 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Isaacson.
Thank you again. Catherine Brennan is, has been on the Commission on Aging. She is a lawyer in town who has specialized in trusts and estates, so in that capacity, she works with a large number of seniors. She too identified the housing need in the town, and identified this, that for seniors who wish to continue living at home, there is currently a problem getting home health aids, because most cannot afford, the aids, that is, cannot afford to live in lower Fairfield County. Therefore, they come from places, Bridgeport or other distant places, in a lengthy commute. And she also identified a need for seniors with And she also identified a need for seniors to help, to receive help with financial management, something like balancing checkbooks, et cetera. But our vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We've interviewed the lady on the eighth, and we voted for 12-0-0. Thank you.
Discussion on item 11. Mr. Boutel.
I believe it's the same as in our call, 3/31/11. It does have it in, she just didn't read it. Is that correct? Yeah. When, when someone presents a resolution, there's no requirement that they read it. They can summarize it, and the assumption was, we all knew that it was the same as in the call. The only change being made here is the word nominated or renominated to appointed.
Thank you, Mr. Boutel.
All right. So, further discussion on item 11. Item 12 now comes before us. Ms. Lavery.
Resolved the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Commission on Aging for a term expiring 3/31/11. Howard Chip Sorrell.
Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? The substitute resolution has been moved and seconded. Mr. Isaacson with our Health and Human Services report.
Mr. Von Keiseling wants me to repeat the date, but I refuse. This is Howard Chip Sorrell, Commission on Aging. He has been a short-term member of that Commission, but now reappointed for a full term. He's a Certified Financial Planner with VaKovia Bank, and as such is constantly working with elderly. He cited the main issues as, number one, workplace housing, relief for property taxes for the elderly, and working with a large age span in town. And, and he cited working for people from their 50s to their 90s, and different needs and, and different requirements for that, that big age span. He also told us about a Vermont plan, which is kind of interesting. It pairs seniors who live alone with town workers, teachers, fire, police, and so on. They also acknowledged, however, that there can be problems with such pairings that I think are pretty obvious. Our vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling. Discussion on item 12. Item 16 now comes before us. Ms. Lavery.
Resolved the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Nathaniel Witherell Board for a term expiring 3/31/11, Thomas Secardi.
All right. So this not only changes the word renominated to appointed, but also changes, deletes alternate. This is a regular member. Is that correct? Thank you. Mr. Isaacson. I'm sorry. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? Substitute resolution on item 16 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Isaacson.
Yes. Dr. Secardi, and by the way, that's a PhD, not an MD, but he is also, he presently is on the Board of Nathaniel Witherell. His experience includes organizational behavior, management, and healthcare administration. He's committed, by the way, to the idea of Witherell remaining a town department, and cited the need for it to continue its success in maintaining a dedicated staff with a need to continue tight economic control of expenses and revenues. The Witherell staff, he pointed out, turnover is 7%. The industry average is 70%. Quite a record. By the way, Dr. Secardi is on the Building Committee for Witherell and told us that the requests for architects' proposals have just gone out. 12-0-0 was our vote.
All right. And prior to calling for Mr. Von Keiseling's report, I'll note, this is the last in our group of combined items, so after we finish this item, we will proceed to vote. And I'll remind all of our members, if you have not yet been sworn in before voting, you must be sworn in. So I ask anyone who arrived after we were administered the oath to please come forward, and our town clerk will administer the oath to you. Mr. Von Keiseling.
Thank you. The Appointments Committee saw Dr. Secardi on the eighth last Tuesday. We voted 12-0-0 in favor of him. He is a superb asset.
Thank you. Discussion on item 16. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Combined items five, six, seven, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 16, and proceed to poll your delegation. While we are voting, we will continue with the second group of combined items. The first of those to come before us is item number eight. Mr. Crumbine.
Mr. Moderator, the next eight items are people that almost certainly are going to be deferred into your March meeting. Is there some way we can just simply vote, take a voice vote, and without having all the committee chairs come up, one after another?
Well, we have to, we do have to get them before us. We don't need the committee reports on it, but we do need to put it before us. So if you could just summarize what they are, and we'll, I'll, we'll go right through them.
Certainly. Item number eight is, resolved the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Board of Parks and Rec for a term expiring 3/31/2012, Ricky M. Capoza.
Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution on item eight? The substitute resolution on item eight has been moved and seconded. At this time, we'll continue before getting the committee reports. Item 13 would be the next. Ms. Lavery.
Resolved the following, excuse me, name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring March 31/11, R. Ellen Avalino.
Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? Substitute resolution on item 13 has been moved and seconded. Item 14 now comes before us.
Resolved the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring March 31/11, Margarita Albin.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 14 has been moved and seconded, and is now before us. Item 15.
Resolved the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring March 31/11, Frederick Henry Brooks.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 15 has been moved and seconded. Item 18.
Resolved the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Inland, Wetlands, and Watercourses Agency for a term expiring March 31/12, Garrett Dietz.
Resolution on item 18 has been moved and seconded, and is now before us. Item 19 now comes before us.
Resolved the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Board of Health for a term expiring March 31/12, Robert L. Iello.
Substitute resolution on item 19 has been moved and seconded. Item 20.
Resolved the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Board of Health for a term expiring March 31/12, Peter A. Arturi.
The substitute resolution on item 20 has been moved and seconded, and the final resolution in this group, item 21.
Resolved the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Alarm Appeals Board for a term expiring March 31/12, Thomas E. Zach.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 21 has been moved and seconded. I will first call on Mr. Von Keiseling to give the report of the Appointments Committee regarding this group, and any other committee that desires to give a report is welcome to follow. Mr. Von Keiseling.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This seems to be an unusual circumstance, so I wanted to give a general explanation for it. I sent out a memo to all of my committee prior to the meeting, and I'd just like to share that with you. I think it's a pretty factual explanation of what we did, why we did it, and what happened, for your consideration. Let's see now. It talks about the motions that might be made to disregard the Appointments Committee's motion to postpone. The Appointments Committee sent nine of the 17 nominations on the call through for appointment. Eight were moved to postpone. Of that eight, four, Mr. Capoza of Parks and Rec, Doctors Ilio and Arturi of Health, and Mr. Zach of Alarms, who, who had not been, at the time of our meeting, nominated by the Board of Selectmen. We met on the eighth. The Board of Selectmen nominated these four names on the 10th, so they were not properly, we felt in the committee, properly before us because they had not even been put forward officially by the Selectmen, and we thought that would be a bit usurpation by our part. Four, the other four that we postponed, renominations exceeded our time, ability to interview. We were able to postpone, we felt we were able to postpone the March, to the March RTM, these nominations without operational interference in their commissions. It should be noted that all of these eight are renominations and reappointments, so that they will serve until replaced, and if we act on them in March as we anticipated, they will be appointed by the RTM with your pleasure prior to the expiration of their term date on the 31st of March, which will be some kind of a record in this town. For your information, we did receive notice and bios of the last four. That was the Albin and Dietz and Avalino and Zach on December 17th, but these were not reissued to the new 2008, 2009 Appointments Committee. The 2006, 2007 RTM dies on December 31, 2007, and any action or pending business dies with it. Also, the Appointments Committee effectively had only one day for interviews for the January RTM, January 8th, and filled that evening with time slots. Our past chairman did try to schedule an interview with Mr. Capoza regardless, but he could not make that meeting for the January 8th. As a result of this, we thought, since there was no pressure on this, this is not a comment on the qualities of the candidates, simply a procedural matter, that if we postponed them to the March meeting, our committee would have the opportunity to interview them properly and do our due diligence. Thank you.
Excuse me. Karen Sodikon, you would like to give the report of the Parks and Rec Committee on one or more of those combined items.
Yes, since we can, we did consider item eight, Mr. Capoza. He called me. He was called out of town and could not make our meeting, but to refresh the memories of those in the room, he was brought before this group in September, when he was, you know, clearly interviewed and et cetera, and we approved him in September. The Parks and Rec Committee approved his appointment by 10:00. He has been a very active member since joining the Board. Rick Wellington gave comments on his behalf, and based on the last interview and the information from Mr. Wellington, we went ahead and voted on Mr. Capoza, 11:01. District Two abstained because, as a new member of our committee, she had not met Ricky in September. Thank you.
Franklin Blumer with the report of the Land Use Committee.
The Land Use Committee met with the subjects of items 13, 14, and 15. All three of these are reappointments of persons who are currently alternate members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We interviewed these three nominees as a group, voted on them separately. The vote on each was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Isaacson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Health and Human Services Committee met with both Dr. Ilio and Dr. Arturi. We saw them separately, however. Dr. Ilio is a member of the Board of Health presently. He's a dentist in town. He, I, I won't go into great detail because apparently this is going to be postponed, but our vote on him was 12-0-0. We also talked to Dr. Arturi, who's been a family physician and 60 years in the healthcare field, presently on the Board, and our vote there was 11:01. District Three abstained because they were not quite satisfied with his answers on a disaster plan for the Board of Health.
Thank you. Any further committee report on the, this group of combined items, eight, 13, 14, 15, 18, 19, 20, and 21? All right. Mr. Von Keiseling, you want to offer a motion to postpone?
On behalf of the Appointments Committee, we would make a motion to postpone this combined group.
Since that is offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. Discussion on the motion to postpone items eight, 13, 14, 15, 18, 19, 20, and 21 to our March meeting. All right, this being a procedure, I'm sorry, Mr. Detchin, District 10.
Maybe it's because I'm getting over a cold, but I, I guess I'll be contrarian tonight, just to change the atmosphere. As you heard from Karen Sodikon, the Parks and Rec Committee addressed the issue of the candidacy of Mr. Capoza, and I rise tonight only to speak to the issue of the postponement of the consideration of Mr. Capoza. The fact is, Mr. Capoza was not with us when we met on Tuesday. However, we had interviewed him only this fall, and in addition, we had with us other members of the Parks and Rec Board, and we asked them about Mr. Capoza's performance in the course of his interim appointment, and the comments were unanimously positive that he has already become a valuable member of the Board. On the strength of that, the Parks and Rec Committee voted to approve and to recommend his appointment. As you've heard, of course, the Parks, the Appointments Committee has voted to postpone that particular, consideration, that particular nomination, and I just want to speak for a minute about the procedural aspect of this. There's two coins, sides of the coin, I think, to some degree with our Appointments Committee. I think on substantive issues, it tends to be very flexible and very aggressive. It, it considers itself empowered to tell the Board of Selectmen whom they ought to not.
Mr. Detchin, should we postpone, or shouldn't we?
I'm getting to that. I'm getting to that.
Well, I know, but we don't, we don't make personal characterizations.
I'm not making a personal characterization.
Well, I, I'm, I think, I think, let's just discuss whether we want to postpone this to March.
I would suggest.
And if we do.
Very good.
The nominee, the nominee will continue to serve.
I, I understand that.
Okay.
I would suggest that the same degree of flexibility that is shown by the Board in regard to substantive matters could also be shown to some degree on procedural matters. In fact, the, the Appointments Committee had seen this individual recently. We have the recommendation already of the Parks and Rec Committee. Although this individual was served, this is another item that we will have to consider in the March meeting, and frankly, given my druthers, on the strength of the report that we've heard from the Parks and Rec Committee, keeping in mind in any event that these actions by the committees are essentially advisory. They're not formal. They're not absolutely required. They're not absolutely required. They're simply the recommendations of the committee, which we, in fact, are free to ignore or free to vote against, which we often do. My druthers, Mr. Moderator, I would have moved to separate this item out, and on the strength of the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Committee, I would have voted, I would have brought this for consideration to the RTM this evening.
All right, so you are moving to divide the question by separating item eight from our combined items.
That's right.
Is there a second? All right, it has been moved and seconded to divide the combined items that are currently before us, to take item eight out of the combined items and consider it separately. That motion to divide is not debatable. It requires only a majority to pass. The effect of adopting this motion to divide would be, item eight would drop out. We would continue to consider the motion to postpone the remaining items in this group, and then we would take item eight up in numerical order among the separate items. Item four would come first, followed by item eight. So this is not debatable. It is procedural. I will call for a voice vote. If you want to take item eight out, consider it separately tonight. You should vote in favor of Mr. Detchin's motion to divide. If you want to leave it in the group, which is subject to a pending motion to postpone, you should vote no. Are we, do we understand what vote I am now calling for? All right. All those in favor of taking item eight out of the combined items, please signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
That motion has failed. Further discussion on the Appointments Committee motion to postpone. All right. The motion to postpone is procedural. I will call for a voice vote. A majority vote is required for adoption. If you are in favor of postponing these until March, you should vote in favor. All those in favor of postponing items eight, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one to our March meeting, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion has carried. That brings us now to our separate items. Item four is the first of the separate items. May we have the resolution on that item? Frank Mazza, Chair of the Hamilton Avenue School Building Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, this is a substitute resolution being presented tonight, and it's resolved, the sum of five hundred fifty thousand is hereby appropriated and added to the following account, Z six eight zero one seven nine two five nine five five zero two five one one zero for Hamilton Avenue School Reconstruction. Said appropriation comes from the Capital and Nonrecurring Fund, period. The resolution simply drops off the end of the previous resolution that said subject to Board of Estimate and Taxation approval.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? Substitute resolution on item four has been moved and seconded. Before I call for the committee reports on this, let me give you the results of the vote on our first group of combined items. Those were the appointments appearing in our call as items five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and sixteen. Those in favor, two hundred and four. Opposed, zero. Abstaining, zero. Those items have carried. All right, back to item four. Mr. Walco? Wait a minute, do you have a committee report? Okay, thank you, Mr. Walco, Chairman of the BET.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. The BET met earlier this evening and took up this item. Frank Mazza, Chairman of the Hamav Building Committee, presented. The Board voted eleven zero zero in favor of this item by approving the additional appropriation of five hundred fifty thousand dollars from the Capital Nonrecurring Fund, subject to release, however, of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars of that amount on the satisfactory presentation by the Building Committee to the BET evidencing the need for the utilization of that money. The BET also invited Mr. Mazza back to its March meeting to offer an update as to the status of this project, and we look forward to his presentation. So to reiterate, the BET did approve this eleven zero zero earlier this evening and subject to release a hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars of that amount on the satisfactory presentation to the BET for the need of that additional amount. That additional amount is the contingency element of this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walco. Bob Brady with the report of our Education Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members, guests. The Education Committee met last Monday night. Mr. Mazza presented this item. He presented the substitute item, and that it was, but reminded us that, in fact, it was subject to approval by the BET, which we have just heard it was passed. This is a five hundred fifty thousand dollar appropriation to the Hamilton Avenue School Building Committee. As I am sure most of you know, Hamilton Avenue School has a contract completion date of July two thousand seven, some six months ago. The contractor has had problems which have delayed the project and has been slow, basically slow to get the work done. First, it was delayed to the fall of two thousand seven, and last June, we appropriated an additional four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, I believe, to cover costs that are incidental, in effect, to the fact that the project is running over. These are not costs of construction itself, but rather they are the costs of engineering, architects, other costs that are associated with the fact of the project running over its scheduled completion date. The presently anticipated completion date is May two thousand eight. That is based on work done by a consulting firm, URS, which was recently engaged by the Building Committee at the recommendation of the former First Selectmen. That firm is the construction manager on the police project, and it was felt that they might be able to work effectively with the contractor on identifying and breaking out, identifying bottlenecks and basically breaking those free so that the project would proceed. One of the first things they found was that of the, of a list of some forty-two problems identified by the contractor between the town and the contractor, some eighty percent of those were, in fact, entirely within the contractor's office and did not involve the architect, our consulting engineers, or the Building Committee. They did, with the contractor rerun, or using the contractor's information about what work remained, run the schedule, and URS basically has told the Building Committee that, assuming that heat was available in the building on December seventeen, they were looking at a mid-May completion date. Heat was available in the building approximately January fourth, so they've already eaten up some of that time. The appropriations basically in four, five segments. Two hundred and seventy-two thousand of the appropriation relates to compensation for architects, engineers, testing services, which will be extended into late spring while the job completes. They must still work on the job. Architects and engineers must review the work and determine whether it's acceptable, whether it's being completed. The, that, that is what will take to get that portion done. Included in there are two months of, two months for URS, which is, presumably, they will not be continuing, I'll put it that way. They will be, they'll work the couple of months and be done. Another part is for specification changes made by the Board of Education. These are, in fact, changes to the work specified by the town, that's seventy-five thousand, and this is to basically improve the security in the parking garage to meet standards recently adopted by the Board of Education. Basically, it brings the building up to its current standards, adding lights and cameras the like underneath. A third component is a hundred and seventy-five thousand for change orders which have been presented to, by the contractor to the Building Committee. Seventy-five thousand, seventy-five thousand, or seventy thousand presented and a hundred and five thousand, which are basically a contingent for additional change orders based on the amount of work remaining and the rate the change orders have been generated by the job to date. So that's, part of that is a contingency, but it's a, they're going to see it on the horizon. A fourth component is for fuel to heat the building. While the contract requires Worth Construction to provide heat during the winter months, Worth said they aren't going to do it. Rather than argue about it, the Building Committee basically decided, and I think he has, that has the support of other parts of the town, to get the job done. And in order to do that, the town is paying an estimated forty thousand dollars for natural gas to heat the boilers in Hamilton, the new school, and provide heat so that, to maintain the temperature at an adequate level so that Worth can do the taping and sheet rocking necessary in the building. Finally, there is a general unallocated contingency necessary to complete the job overall, some a hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred, which brings the total estimated cost to complete from, basically, the end of December, some six, of some six hundred and ninety-five thousand. A hundred and forty-five thousand is on hand, leaving five hundred and fifty thousand, which we are asked to appropriate to them tonight. Our committee voted ten one zero, with District One unrepresented, to recommend approval of this item. District Two suggested that it would be, we would be better off, were we to just give Worth the money rather than hiring additional consultants and engineers, the, and voted no on the item for that reason. The one other item came up, which is, it's related to this. There were three Board of Education members present, Nancy Weisler, Chairman, Leslie Moriarty, Vice Chairman, and Mariana Pons Cohn, who is a representative to the, of the Board to the Education Committee. Ms. Cohn raised a question with the Building Committee that, basically, she understood that the cost of the project was, in fact, far higher than the thirty million that we've, will have appropriated if we appropriate this five fifty tonight. Mr. Mazza assured her that that was not the case, that all of the money appropriated, totaling, again, with tonight, just over thirty million, has gone through the Building Committee, and that, to his knowledge, nothing else has been spent other than some of the planning money that was done before the Building Committee was formed. We reviewed with her the process, and that to, for there to be additional money somehow been spent, it would have required some other town department to volunteer, to contribute several millions of dollars to the project. I consulted Mr. Walco after the meeting on this because, in his, because of his former position as Chairman of the BET Budget Committee, as President Chairman of the BET, and also as a member of the Hamilton Avenue Building Committee, whether, to his knowledge, there had been any other transfers or money appropriated from other accounts to the Hamilton Avenue School construction. He assured me that, to the best of his knowledge, there was not, and again, nor could he figure, nor could he conceive of how that might be done because most other departments would not necessarily want to see their budget going to it. I can't imagine, for example, that Parks and Rec would necessarily want to contribute to it. So the, it's unclear where this was coming from. She did cite the New York Times article, a New York Times article from a year ago, but that said the amount appropriated was twenty-nine million, which, in fact, was the amount that had been appropriated at, by the data of that article. Anyway, that didn't bear on the appropriation itself. We did vote ten one zero. Thank you.
Pamela Frederick with our Finance Committee report.
Hey, Mr. Moderator, members, guests. The item was presented to the Finance Committee by Frank Mazza, Chair of the Hamilton Avenue Building Committee. They provided excellent explanatory notes on the appropriation history of the item, which noted, as was discussed, twenty-nine million, four hundred fifty-five thousand has been appropriated to date, with one hundred forty-six thousand remaining as of December eleventh. Additional costs to complete the project expected to be five hundred sixty-two thousand, and additional contingency of one hundred thirty-three point six thousand is what requires this additional appropriation of five hundred fifty thousand. It is important to note that the project was originally funded with a below-average contingency of eight hundred thousand, and even with the additional interim appropriations of five hundred forty-five thousand and this one of five hundred fifty thousand, the contingency used in the project would be one point nine million. This represents about approximately eight percent of the construction costs, which, again, is less than what is typically found on projects of this scope. Normal contingency would be in the order of ten percent. Our discussion focused on what caused the delays and what the town could do to avoid this problem in the future. Prior appropriations addressed the changes in scope, and the Education Committee reviewed this, details of this appropriation, the line items. This appropriation is largely for additional services costs due to the project extending well beyond the initial contract termination dates. The town process changes include a BET policy change whereby projects that exceed five million will now require contingencies of at least eight percent, and that future bids will include allowance for owners on-site construction managers. Correct me if I'm wrong, that was told to us at committee. A major project, a major change is in the use of a construction manager instead of a general contractor, where the town will now bid out separate work contracts. This was implemented with the Glenville project, where we have twenty separate contracts as opposed to a single general contractor. So we will see how that proceeds, and hopefully that allows the town to retain more control over moving the project on time and on budget. It was also noted that Greenwich has not been able to attract a large number of contractors, in part due to traffic congestion issues, as well as, as a result, this often results in a lack of high number, a high degree of quality, and competition between the bidders. We questioned our ability to dispute certainty of the change orders and delay costs that Worth has put forth. In order to keep the project moving forward, which require, which Glenville, in order for that to begin, requires Hamilton, Hamilton to be completed, no arbitration or litigation has been sought to resolve any of the open disputes or disagreements. I would anticipate that that may come in the future. We also questioned the use of Worth as a contractor, who appears to have caused many of the problems. They are now being used on the safety complex as well, but it was reported that that project is actually within budget and have had, had a schedule, but I'm sure we may see more of that going forward. If a contractor has been approved by the state of Connecticut, then they must be allowed to bid, and therefore Worth was allowed to bid. Our bid requirements will now be refined to allow more discretion and bid acceptance going forward. Based on our discussions and the presentation by the Building Committee Chair, Frank Mazza, we voted twelve zero zero in favor.
David Melick with the report of our Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Well, it's getting late, and in that, in that light, I will not go into too much detail because the prior reports were quite thorough. I could go on for a long time about this, but I won't. We met on, the Public Works Committee met on January seventh to address this item and any other items that were chosen to be taken up, and they were not. Frank Mazza was supposed to present to us, however, he got caught up in the Education and Finance Committees, and we decided to continue a discussion. and Finance Committees, and we decided to continue a discussion on this, on this item anyway. We had a historical review of how we got to the position within the group. We discussed the original schools poorly maintained condition, the technical difficulties of the project due to the tight site, a flawed initial scope that was missing the garage or having separated that from this general, large general contract, problems that sprout with change orders, contractor, Building Committee, Board of Ed, and town relationship issues, and even some name-calling as well, to point out, you know, the fact that Worth is the general contractor on the public safety complex that is running well, and then that's okay, and then the Hamilton Avenue Building, they're nothing. That's not fair. So you have to think about these situations in the minds of the contractor and what we ask them to do. So in our District Eight meeting, I said, "We have met the enemy and he is us." It's not the RTM, because we only bring up and deal with items that are presented to us in the call. The item appears to the Committee to be the cost to commit, to complete the project in time, to not interfere with a much-needed time-sensitive Glenville schoolwork, and we certainly hope so. The Committee voted nine, one, one, District One absent. The abstention from District Seven was due to the desire to hear from the Building Committee relative to the prior appropriation, which was supposed to be the last one. District Two voted no, feeling quite strongly that this being the third trip, the third trip to the well for funds should not be satisfied. So projects finally learn to live within their means. Finally, a committee member was very disappointed with how things have gone, and strongly noted there should be a transparent evaluation of what went wrong. And that gets to Finance Committee's points about some changes that have occurred within our procurement and project planning from a financial standpoint, and that is, and that is good. Perhaps half an hour was spent discussing the theoretical aspects of this item, such as why did the original scope exclude the garage work that was going to have such an impact on schedule? Another area of concern was the design complexity of the building on such a tight site, not to mention the requirement to accommodate the historical aspects of the original building. Finally, the shoestring method of managing such a complicated project with so many issues from political to technical, the cost and schedule overruns became a foregone conclusion. The Public Works Committee and others, I'm sure, expects better. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item Four. Dr. Carlson, District One.
Mr. Moderator, my fellow members of the RTM, the presence of Item Number Four in its present form on our call tonight is to make an exhibition of failure by the town of Greenwich, or perhaps the contractor. I ask you to reason with me for a moment. The explanations that I've heard, I find nebulous to such a degree that I do not know how to apportion the responsibility for this failure. On the one hand, you would have the town of Greenwich offices and various boards, and on the other hand, you would have the contractor. If the contractor was responsible for this failure, I would vote no, and I think any reasonable person would vote no, because the contractor in that case should pay for it. I don't know that for sure, because from the explanations I've heard, I really know very little why we have this five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar item before us. Let us look for a moment in case that some of the responsibility is in the hands of the town. There we would possibly have failure in the Board of Selectmen, or perhaps the Board of Education, or perhaps the Building Committee, perhaps what, the BET, or a subcommittee of the BET, or we could have various town officials. I think that before we vote for giving five hundred fifty million dollars, five hundred fifty thousand dollars to this project, we should figure out where responsibility lies. If it is among officials, elected officials or town officials, some of them should depart from having anything to do with this project before money is voted. Therefore, I ask you tonight to vote no on this item. I ask you to vote in a responsible manner for the people of the town of Greenwich, and that money is not just thrown at a failed project or an aspect of a project which is failure until you know what has happened.
Jim Buttel, District Eight.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, a lot of very important things have been said at the podium tonight on this item. I want to go back and quote some of the things that were said. Mr. Melick came to the conclusion, "We've met the enemy and they are us," and then proceeded to point the finger here, and there, and there. Prior speaker pointed the finger here, and there, and there. Let me point the finger right here. This body, for the benefit of new members, once ed specs are developed for building, we appoint the Building Committee. The Building Committee takes possession of the building. So if we're going to hold the Building Committee responsible, this Building Committee proceeded very differently than prior building committees. This was an all-in, low-bid contract. You heard about how we're not doing Glenville that way. This Building Committee, why didn't we ask that question upfront? Don't blame the Building Committee, blame us. Previous speaker, I can remember vividly, got up here when we first started discussing the Hamilton Avenue project, very concerned about the facade, maintaining the facade of the building, and how we couldn't touch the facade. Chairman of our Building Committee, Mr. Melick pointed out, this lot to meet the ed specs was actually undersized. I can remember having discussions in this body. Mr. Tullhill earlier this evening talked about how the condemnation commission have not condemned property in recent memory. I can remember the discussion on this floor of this body, saying, "Are we going to have to go all the way down to two doors in taking property so that we have a property big enough to put the size school you need to build to meet the ed specs?" So part of the blame is here. One thing that came out of the discussion on this item in District Eight that I find very disconcerting. The point was made, our town attorney approved, checked out the contractor, the Attorney General of the State of Connecticut checked out the contractor, they're on the approved contractors list, but we've had such a miserable experience with this contractor. Maybe it's not entirely, whenever you have two parties that don't agree, it's never one party's fault, it's usually both. But the question was asked in our district, well, are we going to report it to the state? So the next town that comes along and wants to know about Worth Construction will have the record from the report of Greenwich and our experience with Worth Construction building a school building. The reply in our district was, "Oh, no, we don't want to get sued." Offhandedly, somebody with great construction experience worldwide caustically commented, "Do you want both your kneecaps?" Folks, if we're going to do a post-mortem on this building and it comes out that the contractor was to blame at all, that should be reported to the state of Connecticut. So the next municipality that comes along and bids their contract doesn't run into what Greenwich ran into of, "Oh, they're fine, they're fine as a school building construction company, go all in, go low bid with them." So before we start pointing fingers around, start here. We are going to have, we've, I believe, appointed a Building Committee for Glenville, we'll have a Building Committee for the Nathaniel Witherell Project. There's dispute right now there about whether you're going to have a general contractor or a project manager. So those are questions, if anybody learns from this, we as a body need to learn from this. When we appoint Building Committees, we need to ask those questions upfront. What are the ed specs from the Education Committee standpoint, and can you really fit that on this property? And if you can't, nobody wanted to talk about redistricting, nobody wanted this, all predates the whole issues we've had with potential redistricting for any number of reasons, but the size of the school population in that current district, that building is undersized. So don't start pointing fingers at other people, you know, that, don't, don't cast the first stone here because we're as guilty as everybody else.
Further discussion on Item Four. Will the District Chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Number Four, and proceed to poll your delegation? The next separate item, which is Item Seventeen, now comes before us. Peter Crumbine, our Selectman.
Resolved the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency, replacing Christie Kuhn for a term expiring three thirty-one, two thousand and twelve. William Galvin III. I point out that he is already an alternate member on this body.
All right, so this substitute resolution has two thousand and twelve, Mr. Crumbine? Not oh eight, as in the call? All right, will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? Substitute resolution on Item Seventeen has been moved and seconded. Mr. Blumer with our Land Use Committee report.
The Land Use Committee met last Monday evening. We did not know that the resolution was for a full term. That's, this evening was the first that I learned that the resolution was being altered to provide for a full term. We understood when we met on Monday of last week that he was being appointed for the stub portion of the term of Christie Kuhn, which expires in two and a half months. We therefore expected to be meeting with Mr. Galvin in March, when we thought we would be dealing with a full term. In any case, the appointment of Mr. Galvin to the remaining term of Christie Kuhn's, the remaining portion of Christie Kuhn's term, came before, was on the call of the RTM's October twenty-two meeting, and we met with Mr. Galvin at that time. That is to say, we met with him at our regular October fifteen meeting. We voted nine, zero, zero to approve the appointment, but the appointment was withdrawn because the Appointments Committee had not been able to interview Mr. Galvin. It was withdrawn from the October meeting of the RTM. Mr. Galvin had a conflict last Monday evening, and what we did, since we are a different committee from the committee that interviewed Mr. Galvin in October, different technically and different in terms of composition, six new members, but by a unanimous voice vote, the committee authorized me to report the Land Use Committee's vote last October, rather than to move to postpone the item. And so our report is the report of the vote that we took last October, nine, zero, zero in favor of Mr. Galvin's reappointment.
Thank you. Mr. Von Kaiserling.
Well, as somebody said in Alice in Wonderland, "Curiouser and curiouser." We met with Mr. Galvin originally in the Appointments Committee of the last session in December. If you recall, he was on the call, then he was put off to this call. There was a question at that point whether he was a nomination of the past administration, the Lash Administration, and not the new administration, and there was that sort of dead-hand thought that maybe it would be better to have the new administration, you know, concur. So that's why we have him before us today. I believe the, there is no vote on Mr. Galvin before, in the new administration, but there's no objection. Now, there are a number of procedural problems with Mr. Galvin. First of all, a question was raised by, I think, somebody in District Two, and I, they should get it answered to it. You have to have, as somebody mentioned earlier, a proper mix of party affiliations on town boards to satisfy the state minority rule for boards and agencies. Ms. Mary Ellen Labine of the Selectmen's Nominee Committee was kind enough to send to me a report that she had gotten from the town's attorney, an opinion and the state statute, and Mr. Galvin is a Democrat, and Ms. Kuhn was a Republican, but the way this worked out, you have four Republicans on the board and three Democrats, which complies with the minority representation, so that's in order if there was any question. The second thing we did, we were faced with a problem that other committees had with the end of the term of one session, start of another session. We had met Mr. Galvin recently, we knew them. Fortunately, we had little turnover in our committee, so when we voted on Mr. Galvin in January this, last Tuesday, everybody who voted had interviewed Mr. Galvin, had personal knowledge of him. The only new member who did not was a member from District Three, who had not had the opportunity, but fortunately his alternate had, so he stepped aside. So everybody who, in our committee who voted, was the new committee of this session, voted from personal knowledge rather than hearsay or any other reason, and we felt that was a better way of fulfilling the committee's responsibility to you and advice of direct knowledge. Now we come to another problem, as brought out by my colleague in Land Use. The appointment which we acted on was for the term expiring three thirty-one, oh eight. Mrs. Kuhn, when they started this process, I think, believe she left in the fall, and it would have been four, three, four-month process. As this has gotten pushed back, we're now in January, the term runs out in two months from now in March. I believe, if I may interpret for the Board of Selectmen, they felt that it's kind of silly to do a two-month thing and then come back with a whole new term. Now, my committee did not vote on Mr. Galvin for this four-year term. We voted for a, basically a three-month term, which puts us in a quandary. Following the guidance of my friend, Mr. Detchin, of let's not be hidebound by the rules, I can tell you that our committee found Mr. Galvin in proper order, that he was an excellent member of the committee. We support him strongly for the nomination that was before us. I see nothing that would change our opinion of him for the four years, however, I'm speaking from my own opinion, not for the committee, let's make that clear. I don't know what the will of the body will be in this matter, there's certainly nothing to prevent this body from going ahead and approving Mr. Galvin tonight. I certainly would have no qualms about it, I don't think anybody else would, and perhaps if they did, they would raise to object, but from a procedural point of view, it's, it's important for you to know that this is not what our committee met on, or we voted on. Thank you.
Mr. Blumer. Chairman of our Land Use Committee.
Having now heard the report of the Appointments Committee, Mr. Moderator, I would like to move that this motion be amended to provide that the term for which we are voting for, that the, the term for which we're voting for Mr. Galvin expire on three thirty-one, oh eight. In other words, the two committees both considered a motion which anticipated, you know, that the term that we were considering ended in two and a half months. We're now looking at something quite different. My committee expected that we would be looking, we would be meeting again with Mr. Galvin in March. I, on my own, not as for the committee, because of course, this is a different set of facts, move that the motion be amended to provide for a term expiring three thirty-one, oh eight.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No.
It has been moved and seconded to amend Item Seventeen, to change the expiration date of the term back to two thousand and eight, March thirty-one, two thousand and eight, as originally appeared in our call. Discussion on that motion to amend?
Question.
All right, we can adopt amendments upon unanimous consent. If there is a single objection, we would require a record vote. Is there any objection to amending that expiration date to March thirty-one, two thousand and eight?
Yes.
Okay, hearing an objection, will the District, well- Will the district, well, any further discussion on this motion to amend?
Please report.
No, we need a record vote, since there, we can adopt by unanimous consent. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Blumer motion to amend item 17, and quickly proceed to poll your delegation. That wasn't you, it was your colleague in District One?
No. Wait until I have some weak track there.
Well, does it, does it relate to what we're voting on?
No.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM, I rise to make a few remarks about item number 17. That in the Appointments Committee, we have two new members. We have a new member in District Three, and we have a new member in District Seven. My recollection was that the alternate of the new member in District Three voted on this item, and that the new member of District Seven also voted on this item. And to my recollection, the member in District Seven had not participated in the interview in the autumn. I myself abstained on this item, because I thought in regularity, in view that we had new members in bringing this forward, and that I thought it best that we have regular procedures on this matter, and that Mr. Galvin come before the new Appointments Committee. Thank you.
All right, while we're voting on the motion to amend, we can continue to discuss the merits of item 17. Any further discussion on item 17? All right, well, no, we need to await the results of the pending vote on the motion to amend. Let me just remind you, I don't think I specifically said it at the beginning of the meeting, but with respect to any anniversary celebration that we were to organize, obviously, it's a volunteer effort. In the past, when we have organized social events, we have found it critical to have representation from each of our 12 districts. So I ask that anyone interested in getting involved in that, in planning such an event, please contact me. I will be in touch with district chairs to try and firm up a group that can spearhead that planning. This might be a time you want to just rise and stretch your legs. We'll report the vote as soon as we have it. We are still tabulating the vote on the motion to amend. The vote on item number four, which was the $550,000 for Hamilton Avenue School, those in favor, 156, opposed 37, abstaining 6, that item has carried. We have the result of the vote on Mr. Blumer's motion to amend item 17. This was to change the expiration date of the term to March 31, 2008. Those in favor, 121, opposed 64, abstaining 4, that item has carried. The amended resolution is now before us. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item 17? Item 22 now comes before us. Wayne Fox, our town attorney. I ask, I ask our members to please, please take your seats. I ask all members to please take your seats. District Seven, thank you. That's, that's the social district. Wayne Fox, our town attorney.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Moderator. Item 22 resolved that the sum of $750,000 being the same as hereby appropriated to be added to account number A140-51400, professional and other special services attorneys.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 22 has been moved and seconded. Pamela Frederick, Chairman of our Finance Committee.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, fellow members, guests. This item was presented by the Town Attorney, Wayne Fox, to our committee. This is the second interim appropriation for the Law Department. The reason is twofold, as mentioned before. The original budget was set low purposely by the Town Attorney. He believed that that would allow the town to keep abreast with legal issues and legal costs, because he would have to come back before the committee. The second reason is that we do have a large number of cases that require specific expertise, legal expertise, and where possible conflicts exist, where we would need outside counsel. The town, it was reported to us that the town aggressively defends itself to demonstrate the difficulty of pursuing erroneous lawsuits, so we are not one to just turn, roll over, as it will. We reviewed the department's budget and agree with the BET, the stance that the BET has taken and advice that they've given, that to better manage the town's finances, it should, their budget should be set at a higher level, one that is more in line with historical norms. The decision to pursue litigation was a question that came up in our committee, and we thought it was important to note that it is managed broadly by the town, where it is originally recommended, made by recommendation by the Town Attorney. It is reviewed by the Board of Selectmen, by the BET Law Committee, as well as the full BET, and then the RTM Claims Committee. So we have broad representation in making these determinations. The town evaluates legal issues and the decision to pursue a lawsuit or to settle, where reasonable, and much earlier than we have in the past, and so it's believed that we have mitigated our cost, although since we've had these two appropriations, it may not appear so, but we're still fairly in line with historical norms. The committee voted 12-0-0 in favor of the appropriation.
Thank you. Douglas Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, our committee took up this item last Monday Appearing in support of the request for $750,000 was our town attorney, Wayne Fox. He provided a written memorandum that was circulated first to the BET, and then to our committee, and I believe many of our committee sent it out to you. So I won't belabor the number of cases that add up to the $750,000, I believe that most of you have seen that memorandum. The cases in the outside counsel are primarily generated by cases where there are multiple defendants and town employees, and provide a situation where the town must indemnify them. And there can be circumstances under which, if we don't indemnify them, they'd have to have private counsel, and a conflict of interest would be created in that situation. And then there are those additional cases where Mr. Fox has decided that outside expertise is necessarily to properly defend cases. The Kempner case is one example of that, as well as the Hardy cases. Those are cases where we have outside counsel. One of our committee members asked the question, what if we did not vote you this money so that outside counsel could continue with these litigation cases, some of which are coming to trial very shortly? Mr. Fox's answer was that he would have to tell the lawyers to stop working, and the town would have to take over the case. So that is not a situation that we want to be in. One thing that did concern us was that the decision to make the, the decision to hire outside counsel for cases where there is no conflict is Attorney Fox's decision alone. We were somewhat concerned that, that one person, although I'm, his motivations are certainly correct, that one person would make a decision that would provide us with an appropriation of several hundred thousand dollars. Perhaps this is something that the Law Committee of the BET should consider, working with Mr. Fox when he's making these decisions as to whether or not outside counsel is always needed in these very expensive cases. Our vote on the item was 11-0-0, District Four absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item 22. The question was, how much of this money is being spent on the beach access lawsuit?
The, you asked it in a generic term. There are technically two beach access lawsuits. One is a CHRO claim, which is being handled in-house, so there is no outside counsel involved in that. The second, which I think you're referring to, is the Kempner case, which is followed up to the Leiden case. In this current year, there's been spent approximately $102,000, approximately the same amount was spent last year. That, that is one of the matters which is coming up for trial in April of this year.
Thank you. Further discussion on item 22. Mr. Walco, Chairman of the BET.
Good evening again, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. The BET again met this evening and took up this item. Town Attorney Wayne Fox presented, the board voted 9-1-1 in favor of this item. The negative vote and the vote abstaining were as a result of feeling that there was inadequate information provided to those two individual BET members. To recap, 9-1-1 by the BET earlier this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on item 22. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item 22, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the results of the vote on item 17. Oh, all right. I'm going to ask the district chairs to please hold off polling. And I'll ask any interested speaker to please rise. If I do not see you, please rise and shout out, so that this doesn't happen. Once I call for a vote, generally, I will not go back. So don't be shy. I want to give everyone an opportunity to be heard, and if I don't see you, then get my attention, please. Wilma Nasenovic, District Two.
I had a question.
Could you please come forward?
I would like to know why the section that is devoted to special ed attorneys, outside counsel, is now taken out of the Board of Education budget, but rather attributed to everybody in general?
Mr. Fox, our town attorney.
Under our existing charter, any outside counsel or any counsel, any expenses for counsel has to be approved through and by the town attorney. That is why it funnels through us. With respect to the special ed, special ed scenario, there has been outside counsel hired, shipping a good in particular, not only by the town of Greenwich, but by virtually every other community within the state of Connecticut, because of a particular expertise that it has. The Board of Education, per se, does not have an appropriation for attorneys.
I just want to say that in general, I think this is really unfair to parents who have special needs children, because the cost of having litigation is not apportioned to the Board of Education. They, in my opinion, have no incentive not to litigate. And the cost to litigate is apportioned to the parents. And for that reason, I'm going to vote now.
Further discussion on item 22. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards and proceed to poll your delegation on item 22? Did I report the vote on item 17? All right, I have the result of the vote on item 17, the appointment of William Galvin to become a regular member of the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency with a term expiring March 31, 08. Those in favor, 167, opposed 4, abstaining 6, that item has carried. The last of our, those in favor, 167, opposed 4, abstaining 6, that item has carried. The last item on our agenda now comes before us, item 23, Joseph Siciliano, Director Parks and Recreation.
Good evening. This is a substitute resolution, resolved that the RTM accept a gift in the amount equal to the actual cost, not to exceed $450,000 from the Greenwich Point Conservancy to complete the restoration of the exterior of the Innisata Cottage, Queen Anne Building located at Greenwich Point. Further resolve that the aforementioned gift be funded by the Greenwich Point Conservancy as approved by the Commissioner of Public Works and the Director of Parks and Recreation to- to properly execute the restoration.
Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? The substitute resolution on Item 23 has been moved and seconded. Now, this is language, the substitute resolution adopts language that was suggested by our Parks and Recreation Committee, correct? Is there any need for me to reread the substitute resolution?
Yes, how it is.
All right. I will reread it. Resolved that the RTM accepts a gift in the amount equal to the actual cost, not to exceed $450,000 from the Greenwich Point Conservancy to complete the restoration of the exterior of the Innisarden Cottage, also known as Queen Anne Building located at Greenwich Point. Further resolved that the aforementioned gift will be funded by the Greenwich Point Conservancy as approved by the Commissioner of Public Works and the Director of Parks and Recreation to properly execute the restoration. That is now before us. May we have the reports of the committees that consider this? Karen Sodikhan with the report of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Joseph Siciliano, Director of Parks and Recreation, and Chris Franco, President of the Greenwich Point Conservancy, were present with us at our committee meeting Tuesday to discuss this item with our committee. Many questions were asked, which I will summarize for you, but as a result of the lengthy review of the resolution, you have just heard that our committee amended the proposed resolution, and as a result, Joseph Siciliano has presented that as a substitute resolution this evening. As you have heard, the gift is not money, but the completed work of the Innisarden Cottage, Phase 2, which will not exceed in value $450,000. Our committee felt that this was a safer approach to take than the original resolution. The Greenwich Point Conservancy actually has these funds in their account. The Greenwich Point Conservancy wants to move forward in a timely fashion to complete the exterior work at this time. We discussed that before moving to the next phase, Phase 3, the completion of the interior, many questions needed to be answered in regard to the building's exact use, which will, of course, influence the design of the interior, also the cost of operating the building, the access issues for the building, and the maintenance need to be clarified. Chris Franco explained that the Bruce Museum would like to move in, move at Seaside Museum from the original, current location to the newly refurbished Innisarden Cottage. By postponing approval and acceptance of the interior work of the building, the Department of Parks and Rec will need to come before the RTM again with more specific information regarding the issues I've just mentioned. During our consideration, the committee members asked many questions. If the work is done by the Greenwich Point Conservancy, who has the liability during construction? What additional permit is needed? The current MI is only for the exterior work. Is there and should there be an agreement from the town to the Greenwich Point Conservancy? Is the Conservancy planning to refurbish all of the buildings at the point? We were told yes, probably. If so, is there a plan for all of that restoration? Chris noted that Mark Thompson Architects have already been hired and paid $51,000 for design work. And although indirect, the issue and role of the Greenwich Point Conservancy and the Historic Commission's recent interest in having the point designated as a historic area was also mentioned, since then I've learned that the Conservancy has withdrawn its support of that application. While the committee was in favor of the generosity of the Conservancy, they felt there were issues that needed to be, could be improved in terms of the agreement with the town. We, as mentioned, we based on the resolution that was before us that night, we voted to amend the resolution. That vote was 9-2-1. District 10 and 12 voted no, District 6 abstained. Then the resolution as amended, which is now the substitute resolution before you, the vote was 11-0-1. District 6 abstained, based on the concerns expressed earlier, but specifically over the issue that there's no agreement between the Department of Parks and Rec and the Conservancy that spells out all the details of the restoration, management, cost of operation, and access of the Innisarden Cottage. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Frederick with the report of our Finance Committee.
Okay, Ms. Moderator, fellow members, guests. The item was presented by Joseph Siciliano, Director of Parks and Rec, and Chris Franco, Chair of the Greenwich Point Conservancy. The committee voted on the original resolution at $2 million. This was to be a gift from the Conservancy for the actual cost, projected to be approximately $1.6 million with a cushion of $400,000. The first phase was completed, and that was the roof and upper windows, which was before the RTM in the 19, 2005 session. This current gift and the amended resolution is for the second phase, which is the lower windows and the siding, the balance of the exterior. We were told that that was projected at $300,000, so the 450 would incorporate a cushion as well. The third phase, which is for structural and interior restoration, is now being, will come before us at a later date. The building is intended for use and operation by the Bruce Museum, which will move from the seaside building, as well as additional lecture space, a wet lab and history display. The Conservancy, founded in 2004, has a 30-member board, and they have raised $750,000 to date, with no state or federal funding. Total cost, cover that. The construction will be managed by the Conservancy with all town-related costs included in any contract, and town oversight and input in construction management, contracts, and specs. The major controversy that arose in the committee discussion related to the Historic District Commission requesting that the Conservancy, on behalf of the town, apply to have Todd's point included on the National Historic Registry. The Conservancy assessed that this was a positive for the town, which would impart, which would not impart any additional requirements, but rather it was felt that it would allow relaxed building codes for the 13 structures of the original Todd's estate. The committee was concerned that there was little public input and awareness of this application, and that, in fact, there could be potential adverse impact on the town's right of access, control, and decisions affecting the point, be they actual or implied. As a result of these uncertainties, and rather than have the potential to vote down the item, the committee discussed and voted on an amended resolution which would require that the Greenwich Point Conservancy retract its application. We were informed by copy of a letter submitted to the state where this application was, in fact, withdrawn. Based on that, the committee voted 9-2, 9-2-1 in support of the item. The negative, or opposition was due, and much similar to the Parks and Rec's, concerned that there is little written operating agreement between the town and the Bruce Museum that establishes a commitment and clear understanding of how the cottage, in fact, would be run, and the ongoing operating cost, how those would be funded. The abstention was due to the lack of details regarding the Historic Registry, and however, I think both were supportive of the project in general. We took a second vote to just get a sense of the committee's view on the project. Had the Conservancy never applied for the designation, and that vote was 10-2 in favor, given the substitute resolution and the fact that the application has been withdrawn, that vote will stand. Thanks.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 23. Christine Edwards, District 8.
I just wanted to address the discussion that just came forward by Pam Fredericks, which was discussed at our meeting as well at District 8. There was some concern about what the use of this building would be. It's interesting to note that it actually housed nurses, so maybe this is something we should be looking at for original use, which was affordable housing for town employees. But to assume right now, before we even move forward, that we have a use set for this building, I think, is extremely premature and gives a real sense that decisions are being made by bodies, entities, people, to make use of our buildings, whether it's the Queen Anne Building, the Havemeyer Building, any building that could be in town, where people say, this is a great idea, let's use it for this purpose. This is something that the citizens of the town have to look at and have to look at the common good. In Stanford, Sound Waters has a use of a beautiful antique building. There's no charge for people to go in there. It is used for everything from Eagle Scout toward celebrations or other community events, historic discussions of housing, but those are things that come up through time, and this is where we, as citizens, have to look at the common good of how we use all of our buildings and what purpose they serve. And it's interesting, I just was actually caught at the idea that this is where housing was provided for nurses, and there were other elements, I think, where we had some housing and certainly USO events at that wonderful building, which unfortunately burned down on Todd's point. But I really want to bring to the bodies' attention, because we're the ones who are going to be put on the spot for leases, they're approved by the RTM, and we should not be preconceived ideas of who's going to take what building and what they're going to do with it without having discussion, that's why we're doing some of this P O C D, and what can be done with these buildings that serve the highest quality of public good. And I really want to bring that out. This is not a decision that's been made, and we argued and discussed that in great detail in District 8. Anyone else in other districts in terms of use? Did you talk about that? We can't just say, oh, the Bruce Museum would like to offshore its, its little seaside thing, make room for its new expansion, and use that space of the Bruce Museum, which is a 501(c)(3) organization. They're independent. They're not the town in the same way, though there is some relationship. We have to look at what that public good is. I cannot emphasize this enough, and I call on all the citizens of the town to start looking broadly at what the uses might be for all these buildings. Thank you very much.
One comment in response. Leases would come to us only if they're characterized as leases. There are uses down at that point in particular that are not characterized as leases for buildings. Further discussion on Item 23. Mr. Siciliano?
Want clarification?
Director of Parks and Recreation.
With respect to the last speaker, back in 2005, December, when the RTM approved the first allotment of money, I was charged by the RTM in the first selectment to put together a group of folks, user group committee, consisting of Shellfish Commission, the school biology classes, Friends of Greenwich Point, Greenwich Point Conservancy, on and on, to discuss what the future use of that building would be for. We did come up with the terminology, the Seaside Educational Center. It has been brought before the Board of Parks and Recreation and in resolution form given to the prior first selectmen, so we have started that process. We will continue the discussion, and we will continue the discussion in the future with the RTM to make sure that they're comfortable with the terms moving forward. Thank you.
Excuse me. Further discussion on Item 23. Mr. Brogan, District 2.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, I really, probably a point of information, and through you, I'd like to ask the appropriate party, there was some confusion in our district meeting, and I've heard gifts, I've heard, you know, we approved money, or are we approving the gift of work done? Or are we, yes, thank you.
We are not accepting cash. The work will be done by the Greenwich Point Conservancy.
Okay, thank you. With respect to that, that in a way worries me, and it's not that this isn't a wonderful and generous gift, and that, and I think the uses proposed are very appropriate, and I think it's going to be wonderful when it turns out, but however, my, I guess my apprehension is, is that the terms between the town and the group are not known, at least to me, maybe they're known to others, about what the rights and responsibilities of each party is to get this work done. And, you know, we've had issues in the past where we've had wonderful gifts like the, you know, Old Greenwich School, the steps in the front, which where things didn't turn out as well as we expected. There were delays, there was extra costs. And, you know, personally, I'm really not that pleased, or I don't think I'll be able to vote in favor of, you know, the acceptance of these gifts where it's work done on town buildings, as opposed to, even though we mention under the supervision of, but really the contractor's going to be the individual group, and those sorts of arrangements worry me personally, at least without knowing all, like I said, all the technicalities between the town and the group. So, you know, personally, I'm a little troubled by it. I don't know if that is enough for everybody else, but I would like to know more about it. Thanks very much.
Further discussion on Item 23. Chris Franco, President of the Greenwich Point Conservancy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you for letting me address your meeting tonight. I'm Chris Franco, I'm the President of the Greenwich Point Conservancy, and I just wanted to tell you a little bit about the Conservancy, because I think there are some misunderstandings, or at least misapprehensions about our intentions down at the point. We were founded in 2004. It's a group of all volunteers. We have approximately 30 board members. We've received more than 800 donations from members from residents all over town, as small as $10 or $20, as much as several thousands. And our mission is to work for the restoration and the preservation of the buildings down at the point. We don't have any intention to use the buildings, we're just a volunteer group of citizens. We don't have a dog in that hunt, if you will. You know, it's, we're working with the, with the town, we're working with all of the various user groups in town that are interested in the point. It's really not just the Bruce Museum, it's the Greenwich Audubon, it's the Shellfish Commission, it's the Conservation Commission, it's the schools, it's the Friends of Greenwich Point, and a number of other organizations. Every one of these organizations has had an opportunity to meet privately with our architect, Mark Thompson. They've all had opportunities to work with Joe Siciliano's task force, and I think the intention as we go forward, and again, this will come back before the RTM, before the final phase of the gift, which is really the most important and apparently controversial portion, which is how does it, how will it be used and how will it be designed? But the building is being designed so that it will be suitable to be used by all of those groups. And if, in fact, the Bruce Museum ends up being sort of a lead tenant, if you will, it won't, it won't be the only user of that building, and in fact, it may or may not become the lead tenant ultimately, but the intention is for this building to be used broadly by all, you know, members of the community, much like, much like the lady was mentioning, we've looked at Sound Waters, frankly, as a model for this, because Sound Waters in Stanford occupies a beautiful historic building that's been restored on the waterfront. It's, it's used for environmental education, and in fact, the task force unanimously determined that this building should be used for environmental education. It would be used by children, it would be used by adults. It's not a very big building, believe it or not. When you drive by it, it looks a little bit bigger than it actually is. It's only about 1,600 or so square feet, so the facilities would be intended to be shared by all members of the community. There would be, presumably, there would be several labs in the building, there would be lecture space, meeting space, and just general, just, it would be an opportunity to do some displays there and for folks to just generally enjoy a historic, restored building on, on the seaside. I think, I think most folks agree that it would be a vast improvement to what's there. You know, that building was used by nurses. In fact, it was used from 1906 to 1913 by a nurse named Anna Maxwell, who was one of the most important nurses in American history. She was known as the American Florence Nightingale, and she was one of the first women to be married, I'm sorry, to be buried at Arlington National Cemetery, because she was one of the founders of the Army Nurse Corps. She was, she was one of the, she was the nurse that got officer status for nurses in the military, so, so it was used by a very important and historic group of women. Another thing that we've learned, and I think this is fascinating, is that the buildings, that the historic buildings down at the point were all designed by an architect named William Appleton Potter, and he and his brother had an architecture firm, and they were the uncles of Mrs. Todd, her maiden name was Potter. And the, these two architects also designed the Mark Twain House up in Hartford, which is recognized nationally, and in fact, all over the world, as being a true architectural gem and one of the best gem and one of the best examples of its type of architecture. Now, we have 12-plus of these buildings that were designed by the same architects down at Greenwich Point, and frankly, they're falling apart, you know? I mean, if you, if you drive into the point, the first thing you see on the left is the Innisarden Cottage. It's an absolutely magnificent, very humble example of the turn-of-the-century architecture. And we have been fortunate to be able to repair the roof, the, really, from the roof line up, we put in new windows on the second floor, and we were able to put a new shingle style roof on, which was the first thing that we wanted to do, because water was pouring into the building, and there was plaster collapsing and just damage being done. So what we would like to do now is really just finish the exterior. We would have liked to have done it at the time, but we didn't have enough money to do the entire exterior at that point, but we felt it was important to just get the roof done to stabilize the building. So now we have a half-done building. And this next phase that we're asking tonight for approval of is to finish the exterior. Windows on the first floor, there's some shingles, there's shingles that need to be replaced along the back, it's been, it's been boarded up. There's a, there's a, there's a moderate amount of structural work that's needed. We've got a cushion in there, because when you start to work on a 100-year-old building, you always find something that you didn't expect. In fact, when we gave the first gift to the town for the roof, it was a gift of $275,000, and we ended up spending $305,000. It was $30,000 more than we had all anticipated, because we found additional things that needed to be done. So we're prepared to do that. We don't want to use, the building's not for us. It's not like we're taking a wonderful building off the town rolls. We're doing it for the community, and, and we're doing it because we love and value the historic buildings down at Greenwich Point. So I really hope that you'll allow us to keep doing our work. We need to build momentum. We're a relatively new group, just a few years old. We've been very successful, we've raised a lot of money, but we need to show progress in order for the community to continue to support us. So I ask you tonight to accept this next phase, and I can assure you that when it comes time for us to come back, first of all, we have to raise a lot more money to do the interior, and then we have to do a lot more planning, as you've heard tonight. So we'll be back, and we'll have a much more detailed plan at that time, but I ask you tonight to approve this next phase for us. Thank you.
Further discussion on item 23. Yes, sir.
Jeb Beck with District Eight. I'm also on the Finance Committee. The one thing I haven't heard anybody say tonight is "thank you" to Mr. Franco. We've, we've, we spend a lot of time massaging these issues, and I think that's great in the RTM, but assets in this town tend to be more of a liability in terms of maintenance than they, than they can be an asset. We have here a group that's, that's volunteering to put time and effort, and up to $2 million if they raise it, to help restore a building that's falling down. I, I quite frankly don't see what the issue is, and I think we, we, again, ought to just thank Mr. Franco and his team for helping to restore, you know, a valuable asset for, for the town of Greenwich.
Further discussion on item 23. Ms. Edwards.
I concur, and thanks, Jeb, that this is really wonderful civic virtue again. The only thing that I just want to just bring out is we tend in the town to, as Mr. Siciliano says, put together a task force, and there are people who exist in the town and perhaps in the community, but it's not open to the public, where we might find people who could bring fresh and new ideas. And the only thing that I would like to add to, to what I said in response to Mr. Siciliano is that the public be informed when we put task force together, so that people who are interested parties may participate. And again, that's getting as many citizens who are out there involved in this process, because the more we have people brought in and engaged in these different projects, I think the better it is. The more knowledge base is out there, the more participation, and, and the people in the public as, as a whole doesn't feel blindsided that things are just happening with no public participation. So I just bring the issue to not just people of, if you will, like mind, or, oh, they're doing this kind of work, and they're all together. Let us also always open to the public and have public invited to these meetings. Thank you.
Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item 23, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the results of the vote on item 22, which was the appropriation of $750,000 regarding outside counsel. Those in favor, 154; opposed, 18; abstaining, five. That item has carried. This being the last item to come before us tonight, we will await the tabulation of the vote before proceeding to adjourn. Once again, welcome to all new members. Welcome back to our returning members. We are off and running. I have the result of the vote on item 23, which is the acceptance of a gift regarding the Innisarden Cottage at Greenwich Point. Those in favor, 168; opposed, one; abstaining, one. That item has carried. That being the last item to come before us tonight. An absent objection, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for coming, and have a safe trip home.